Computer says four thirty.
Hi.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Bunty.
Here.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here. Tim, did you want to say the invocation?
Bow our heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity for the Board to meet, let it be productive. Bless the people harvesting silage and the farmers. Bring a little rain, please. You're so good to us. In Jesus Christ's name.
Join us for the invocation.
I believe in the flag of the United States of America and to their Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Made a change in the order here. Switching number five and number three. Is there any other additions or deletions for the agenda?
For the agenda?
Or would George support it by Steve to adopt the agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Carrie. Brief public comment. No, okay. Consideration of the consent calendar.
For the consent calendar? Support.
By George, supported by Tim to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's an aye? Carrie. Administrators' report.
Well, I got a short report tonight. Majority of the last couple of weeks have been spent at events where the majority of the commissioners have been attending too, so I'll let you speak on our events out at the airport. We've had a successful couple of weeks in hiring new employees. At COA, we have a new head cook that was just offered. Specialty courts have filled out their positions. We have interviewed for an IT specialist and we have an offer that is outstanding. That is, that is too fresh to say whether or not we're going to have that filled, but we're confident that it will. And that'll be a position that would fill on October first. And this week Sheila is helping our nine one one director interview for administrative assistant position out at Central Dispatch. Open jobs remain with the sheriff's office within Corrections and Road Patrol. And I believe we still have part-time bailiff position that is, that we're accepting positions for. We do have at the end of this month, the Michigan Association of Counties training for commissioners. I, I do know, I believe Jan has signed up for that. I do encourage the rest of you, if you're interested in, in going up to Traverse City for this training, to let me know. I will send an email out tomorrow morning when the deadline is for that. So if you want to get back to me, we can get you signed up for that. Other than that, we'll go through the budget process later on in this meeting.
Is, is the IT specialist position, is that a new one or?
It is a new position. This position was created by the board probably two months ago when we approved the new IT support contract. It was, it, it cost us more to bring in onsite assistant for three days than it would be to have hired one for. Yep. So that's the position that we're we're looking to fill here on October first.
Steve?
The day after our meeting, I had Parks and Rec meeting. I was kind of racing in there by moving my twins in that day to college and made it all the way to the Elma Library, only to remember that the meeting was at the Ithaca Hub Share Park, so. I went out there and I was just a few minutes late by the time I got there, but things are going well in the parks. Their, their water is, you know, we had them sign a contract for people to treat the water. And the water has stayed really nice this summer for as hot as we've had the summer, the water, it stayed nice. And some of the fishermen have been complimenting John on how nice the water is. And so he asked him which, which park's better to fish this year, and actually Upchair is better this year. And which is rare because Upchair's water has been the one that they've had the most algae plumes in, so kind of a nice thing to hear that they're not having terrible luck with the water. Went to the fly-in, drive-in, fly-in of the airport. It was spectacular, it was really, I was super impressed. My wife had never been to our airport. I've been out there a few different times, but she was really impressed with the entire airport, the facilities. Excited about the probability of a new terminal, we looked at that, the schematics there. I was really kind of blown away, the length of time we were there, how many planes came in while we were there. It was really impressive because they just, when we first got there, I mean, obviously there were some, but it just kept getting bigger and bigger and bigger. So that was really cool. Same thing, there was a lot of cars there as well, but to me, it was, you know, you've been to a lot of car shows, but when you start seeing all the aircraft, you talk to some of the owners and stuff and where they were coming in from, that was, that was really cool. So. Olden Township last Monday. Their, their meetings are always, they have by far the most business stuff to take care of. Just by sheer amount of stuff they have going on in their township. I was only there for the beginning portion of it because I had another appointment that I had to go to. Actually to conduct some business in their township, so they thought that's funny. And then last Wednesday, George and I had Health Department in the morning. Working on getting some more of the contract stuff settled with the employees there. We're going to, where we extended a contract to Liz, the head of the Mid-Michigan Health Department. It'll get her to retirement, so it's three years, three months. So it gets her through December of, let's see, it'd be through twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. So through December thirty-first to twenty-seventh, so that'll get her to her eligibility for retirement. And then like she said, I'll decide then, but she just wanted her contract to be that extra three months, so. Other than that, they talked about some mosquito-borne illnesses. So just be cautious. Some of them are pretty
Pretty nasty.
Pretty nasty stuff to humans and the way that these, some of the some mosquitoes, if like the water source that they're in dries up, the mosquitoes die. The ones that they were talking about that are all over the world, I mean, it's in every area of the world, those mosquito larvae can hatch, dry completely out to nothing. And as soon as they get water back on them, they come back as a viable, it's really unbelievable, to be honest. And then continue to carry on these diseases, that's how it replicates. And is theoretically all over the world, different places. So that was, that was interesting, I thought, when she did her segment on that. Oh, and we have a new board member, I can't remember his name, from Macon County.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I can't remember his name, but nice guy, he, he filled in for Phil, was it Phil Cohn?
Yeah, Phil.
Phil Cohn that stepped down from the Macon Board. And this gentleman had won the primary. And I think is running unopposed in the, so they appointed him and he stepped in and was doing, I think he was
Gonna be fine.
Oh yeah, he's gonna be fine. So, yeah, it was nice.
Jan, did you have any reports?
Yes, I do, and I apologize because I meant to bring the report from Michigan Works. I had a meeting on the twenty-sixth, which was a Monday in Saginaw. And it was going to be Executive Board and also Regular Board, but not enough of the Executive Board showed up. And so we went ahead and had the Regular Board meeting. And then we met again on the twenty-ninth, which was a Thursday, then we met in Midland. And all set to, what we're doing is going over the audit and going to approve different things that's happening. And again, we were short, so we couldn't have that meeting. So we rescheduled it again for the thirtieth, which is the next day. And that day, everybody showed up. We were able to finish our business and move it out and move it into the full board meeting. And basically what it is, is on the audit, it tells you the percentages, that's what I, I need to bring that paper, I'll bring it to Angie. We have her make a copy for everybody and maybe either send it out so you can be looking at it. But it tells you the statistics and jobs and the different, well, our different areas, which would be Gracha, Isabel, Midland, Bay City, and Saginaw. It tells you the jobs that are opening, just statistics of what's out there. How many people are, are taking these jobs. And they're also having a job fair. I have not, it's been years since I've been to one. And so I'm thinking about doing one of the job fairs, just this is where your young people come, anybody can come. And you can kind of walk through and see what kind of jobs are out there. And maybe, and also they have training for these jobs. That was one of the things we had to approve the money that we would get for different things such as training. Anyway, I'll get the paperwork to Angie. I apologize for that, it's been a busy time. And other than that, seems like I've been to a few other meetings, but and this next, this next month, September is my busiest month for meetings and also the school. I've been called back, we were just, I was just talking to Tim. I've been called back to the school, which is unusual. Usually I don't go back to school to work the month of September, October, usually by November, they start calling me, but I've been called right from day one. I've had to turn three jobs down already, but I am gonna, I'm starting back in. So I think it's going to be a busy year for us pros that do work at the school. I know I talked to Tim and he's been called already too.
Tim, did you have any meetings?
Well, just the Republican meeting Wednesday. My townships meet next week and the Elma City Commission meets next week and my, I'm on the Mental Health Board and that meets next week too. So I just went to the Republican meeting and things are getting kind of excited because they're closer and closer to the election and there's young people, Emma was there to represent Molinar. Then a young man was there to represent Rogers, running for the US Senate. And I, I think Chuck Murphy should be really praised for you know, keeping it the hours he keeps the thing open and he's got a full-time job. So then I, I don't know if you want to share that I had an interesting phone call from you about an interesting person you had lunch with. If you don't want to.
I will after. George?
Yeah, I had on Monday, Broken Ridge had their village meeting. They've just finished up their extra lane on forty-six. They're preparing that because they're going to build a new fire barn in their, in their industrial park. So that's all done. I did inquire about pictures again for their new park. They haven't supplied us any. And I was told that they are making a video plus pictures up of both the Splash Park and the new downtown park. So we'll have all that information. Because they're going to publicize it, so. That'll be pretty good. And the Board of Health meeting, one of the things that I walked away with there, besides meeting the new commissioner for Macon County, is that I noticed that overall immunizations are down. More, more parents are opting out of getting immunizations. And I'm curious, and I didn't ask the question, I didn't think of it till later, but I'm just wondering if it wasn't COVID that sparked that because they're higher than normal. And I'm one of the things that I'm worried about is down the line, if we get a measles outbreak or polio outbreak or something like that and they haven't had their shot, that could be a problem. So I hope parents take another look at that. Just for the own safety of the kids, I know there's a lot of ifs and not, there's pros and cons and the internet's got all sorts of crap on it. But if you look at it over time, immunizations have done a great world of good for young people today. They don't go through the things even we went through. With the chickenpox and the polio and measles and everything else we had. You know, you have to, it's just, it's just better, but parents don't, they choose to opt out of that. And I just hope they're not hurting their kids in the long run.
I need to ask you a question, is it to give the COVID nineteen shot or is it?
No, 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 this is general immunizations to go to school.
I thought they had to do that anyway.
Opt out.
Not now, they can opt out. Yes.
Ingrash is really high of the three. We, we do, when you look at our numbers, even though they're down, we're still way better. Clinton and Grashit are, are still fairly high. Macon is way down. Like, way, like, that, that one really does concern.
Yeah, that was it.
I mean, you're, I mean, it's just, just over fifty percent, I mean.
Yeah, they're huge. It's gonna hurt. I just, I just hope everything turns out, but those types of things do hurt me a little bit. Then, oh. Chris, Chris mentioned the Commissioners Forum. I've been, I've been to them before. If you haven't gone, I encourage you to go. A lot of interaction, you meet a lot of people, it's good. So I think if you have time, sign up and go to that. Uh, that's it.
You were talking about the one in Traverse?
Traverse City, yeah.
Well, I went to the fly-in. That was, that was really something. They actually ran out of food because they had more people turn up than they had expected. And that's a good thing. Except
But we got more.
We got more.
It's not like we just ran out of stock.
And like Tim, most of my meetings are next week. Greater Grashit was canceled. I got I got roped into being a judge at a sheep sharing contest at the Genesee County Fair. And it paid a thousand dollars for the winner, so. There were six people from Canada, people from Minnesota, South Dakota, Iowa. It's kind of, kind of fun.
Who won?
Who won?
A big guy from Iowa.
Iowa? Well, at least it was American and won for crying out.
Yeah, the one Canadian was second. Oh. Tim mentioned I had lunch. The guy that ran against him last year called and wanted to have, wanted to have lunch with me. He's running against John Molinar this time. And I, I asked him point blank, he says, if you can't win a tiny Commissioner District in Grashit County, how in the hell are you going to beat Molinar? Says, well, I'm not, but I'm getting my name out there. Well, good.
That costs a lot of money to do those races.
And congressional ones.
Okay, we're on to new business. Approval of the annual childcare fund budget.
Jennifer Wood, I'm the Court Administrator in the front of the court. Most of you know me. I'm here to ask the Board to approve our annual childcare fund budget. This is the budget that I put together for the state every year. It handles, it covers services for delinquent and neglect and abuse youth in Grashit County. And it's pretty similar to last year, except there was a legislative change last year, so the county actually gets a higher reimbursement. We pay the, we pay the bill and then the state will reimburse seventy-five percent of out-of-home placement or of in-home care services and fifty percent of out-of-home. It used to just be a straight fifty percent across the board, but last October first, that changed. So we're actually getting a higher percentage back. And there are some new requirements that are, the push is to keep more kids in the home. Here in Grashit, we've always tried to do that whenever possible. So I put this together and it looks pretty similar to last year and I entertain any questions anybody might have. I'm asked, looking for approval of the budget and the contracts that are contained within the budget. I don't have the specific contracts today, but I had spoke with Chris. They're, they're referenced in here, but I'm in the process of getting them signed by the contractors and making sure they're all set before I present them to the chairman for signature.
How many children do you serve?
It, it varies. I think we've had about a hundred delinquents this year. I think
You say delinquents, you mean?
So that would be youth under the seventeen and under that have committed a crime.
Right.
Uh huh. And then we also serve neglect and abuse children, which are parents who have found to have neglected or abused their children. And I think the current caseload, don't quote me, is about twenty-five to thirty right now that we're serving in the county. But it can vary, obviously, depending on how many just petitions that we get in from the Department of Human.
So you try to educate the parents.
Right, yep. If Department of Human Service would bring a petition to the court and then the judge would decide if they met that criteria that the law sets out. And then if they, they become jurisdictional at that point, if they do meet the criteria that they have violated that law. And then we provide services to try to reunite the family. And then that, that's, it takes anywhere, you know, from a few months to a year. And then at that point, there's a decision made about whether to continue to provide those services or whether it's time to look at terminating parents' rights and trying to get the child into another permanent situation.
So you put kids in foster?
Sometimes they're in foster care and sometimes they're in their home with services going in to try to keep them safe and in their home.
Jennifer, I think you have one of the hardest jobs.
Thank you. We, we try. I mean, you know, it's, we have a lot of support and a lot of services in the community that help.
Tim and I both are pair pros for the school.
Yeah.
I'm mainly a teacher.
You're a teacher. Yeah, I'm sorry. You guys see a lot of
He's the teacher and knows the pair pros.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, but either way, it's sad for both of us sometimes, with the kids that are unhappy and
Yeah, it's emotionally draining to work with.
I worried all summer about one little boy. It's just, I'll be happy to see him again and make sure he's okay. It sure is different today. I think we I think about seventy years ago, how things were done, what they're done today. People back then, I mean, that was what their solution was, but I think today, leaving kids in the home where they're not being fed or taken care of or or not being, you know, just being abused. Physically and mentally abused. And, and of course, nobody knows us except for that child.
Right.
I just think that it's really, I'm sure you go home many nights wondering about children.
Yeah, it's a hard balance because, you know, overall, I do think the push to try to keep them in the home, if you can do it safely, is a good thing because most kids want to live home. They want to be home.
I think it's, I think back now, like each generation, it's gotten a little worse. But I think too, like when you are abused as a child, you grow up and you have a tendency to do the same thing. Not knowing that, that, that that's not how life is. And so, I mean, you've got a hard job and I give you a lot of credit for doing it.
So Jennifer, how much you ask for the nine four hundred?
Well, the overall budget is just over a million dollars.
What are you asking us to approve tonight?
Just in the overall budget, that's just a, that's an overall figure. We won't go over that, but we don't generally spend that.
Usually, I know we usually had to put so much in.
I don't think you need to pick a dollar amount. I think you approve the budget that I presented in front of you normally. Which includes a dollar amount, I suppose, that it won't go over that amount.
Yeah, well, I just said, yeah, I was looking at the court expenditures. Okay. Well, I'd make a motion, then we go ahead and approve the contract.
That comes out.
By George, seconded by Jan to approve the fund budget for fiscal year twenty-five. Does that be a roll call?
No, doesn't need to.
Needs to be, okay.
I did also add to sign the contracts as they come in that are included in this budget. If that's okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's an aye?
Thank you.
Some guy wants to airport, to carport structures. Dave?
Good afternoon. So if you're not aware, I think Fred may have mentioned it in one of his reports. Out of Central Dispatch, we're housing the new E-Rail trailer as well as the Red Cross trailer for this region that houses their cots and their disaster stuff in our parking lot because we're there twenty-four seven, we've got the cameras on them, so they're secure. A secure location. As we were talking, we were looking at maybe protecting those. Fred and I have come together to look at going for a grant for these carports, so very little money hopefully coming out of any budget, if any. And I'm looking for a blessing or permission to build those carports on the property with the grant approval financing taken care of. Yes, sir.
Dave, these do, are they portable?
The
They're not permanent, are they?
No, no, they're not permanent. They're
Yeah, there's, yeah.
We hook them up and take them out.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we didn't want them in the weather and
Yeah.
snow and all of that, so we wanted to be able to protect them.
Okay.
Yeah. What vehicles are they?
There are two trailers. The E-Rail trailer that we just got. It's a sixteen-foot trailer.
I think it's sixteen.
Yeah.
Those trailers.
Closed, they're enclosed trailers and then the Red Cross trailer is a little bit smaller. We have them on the ends of our parking where the cameras can see them.
You're looking at two separate?
Yes, two separate.
My question is, did we look at doing, like, no offense, Grashit County is kind of a leader in our, our renewable energy of doing like solar panels and parking, like they have all over Michigan State's campus.
I have
You know, if you'd looked at that, just because it would be a
I would not mind looking at
Double whammy out of that, you know what I mean? We can have obviously the protection you're looking for, for these things, which I'm a thousand percent for because we agreed to the maintenance of those. Thousand. And when we agreed to that maintenance, that means we get to buy the tires and all that, the new stickers and all that stuff when they go bad. So putting them inside is brilliant. But I just was like, oh, if we put
I, I thought about asking to put some solar things out there to help with maybe our costs in the center for energy. Because the bill is getting increasingly more every month.
Yeah, it's not going to go down. I mean
No, no, it's not.
That's where I was like, no. If you got a grant through maybe the USDA or something like that for that, especially with that E-Rail trailer, I can't imagine that they wouldn't see the connection. You know, they may be able to expand it to where you could have it for your employee parking on the backside anyhow, you know, because, and who wouldn't like that, that your car was in the snow and all those wonderful things that happen. Because I mean, you're kind of an ideal location for that back parking lot, face south, I mean, and get some of
Yeah. And I've seen those pictures and I, I would not mind going that route. We hadn't thought that deep. We wanted the carports though to be covered on three of the four sides. So if that can still work with solar panels and
I think they can do like a partial wall. Because then now they rotate, you know what I mean, so they, they can't be full height. I don't know whether these were going full height or not, but you can go up, I don't
Wanted to make sure
And you can do like six feet and as long as it can rotate above.
Six feet off the ground up?
No, the, the things are higher, the solar panels, but the actual sub-walls to block your sun coming in from the side to degrade things.
Yeah. Yeah, that and the tires.
Yeah.
Uh, no, we don't have any problem.
This was aggressive.
We're, we're
Looked at it to get a cost comparison or
Well, we've, we've, we, we got a comparison for, we just got the carport one because we're that far, that deep. Didn't mind doing, we can do that. The grant that we've put in for is the Luniate Foundation, it's not due until October, so we have plenty of time to to research some more inputs. I'm just looking for, you know, the blessing to do it if do it however we can do it.
I support, I just think
Renewable energy would be
Absolutely. I mean, it's It would be nice. I mean, it it's. It's gonna help you.
Mm.
Um, I don't even know what the rate it is right now, the consumers. You know, if you were to, you're never gonna generate enough electricity to pay or send any back. You're never gonna get generated enough for.
You know, offset your costs, so. Um, just because the thing's twenty-four hours a day and the amount of electricity you're using out there is meant, so.
Um.
You know, but if it did anything to offset.
It's awesome. Gives you more tax dollars to spend on other things. And let's face it, we're not going anywhere, you know, it's not like we're gonna move the nine one one center.
Move the nine one one center.
Yeah, so that's, that's my point and it could be a long-term investment thing for. Such a.
We can look into that, I can.
We have no idea what it costs, but I know that. We can get lots of photos for that.
Yeah, they're big, big things right now.
Yeah.
Everybody wants to put them somewhere.
I prefer that they're covering up asphalt than dirt, so.
Yeah.
So.
You think they go to every grocery store, Walmart, there is in the world and put them up?
Here's.
Here, yes.
You're gonna make the motion or?
I so moved that we support the Gracia County. Nine one or central dispatch and emergency management. Uh, go after a grant to fund carport structures and they can. Or they have some time they can possibly explore what it would do to, or take to do this all.
Moved by Stephen, supported by George. To. Approve the grant for funding for their carport structures. All those in favor, say aye. O's nay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we moved number five to. About the number three, so.
Well, thank you, because I think we have another meeting. And make it real simple, just here for money. Um, like everybody needs it, I do that. Um. It's my understanding there might be some of the ARP money um, still left or available. Um, Elba Township, we didn't really need anything when you guys got it and everybody else was asking for it. You guys did some great projects with a lot of different communities, different things. Um, we really didn't have a whole lot going on at that time, didn't, you know, everything was kind of sufficient, but since that time, a lot of things changed. So with our money, uh, we got eighty thousand. Um, one of the things that we were gonna do is build a. Um, pole barn at cemetery. So we had new places to store lawnmowers and different things. Why, we were kind of talking about the. Um, pole barn, one of the residents happened to be our meeting that was building a new home at the time. He says, well, I have a pole barn right next to the cemetery with a house. And was willing to sell us some few extra acres, the house, the pole barn and everything. So it worked out better for him. Um, that way he didn't have to worry about selling his house to other people. And so he liked it, we liked it, we got a pole barn. But we also now have a place that we can store stuff and we have a little bit more real estate that we have to um, kind of work with. So we did purchase the the funds, we took our eighty thousand, we um, bought five acres, the pole barn and the house for a hundred and thirty thousand. And one of the things that I had kind of proposed to the county, one of the things I'd really like to see is a kind of a utility tractor to be able to be able to use at the cemetery to keep up our. Driveways to maintain it a little bit better. Um, right now, they basically got, you know, shovels, wheelbarrows and however they do that. Because if we ever had to do anything and move anything, we either usually rented one. Um, so now we kind of have the um, the ability to be able to store something larger um, than just a lawnmower. Um, and be a little bit more secure in the area. So it's one of the things that as we kind of threw. We kind of submitted this earlier in the year that if there was any funds left or available. Um, that's one of the things we would like to be able to talk about is a possibility of. Having the funds to be able to kind of pick up like a local boat or tractor that has a pull mower. Uh, we now have seven new acres. That's a little bit more to mow, uh, to maintain. We got, again, a few more roads we're gonna have to put in. And some different things and it'd just be a little bit easier to be able to work with onto that, so. It's just some of the, one of the things that we kind of had put together, we really. Like you said, when this was all going through, we really didn't have, you know, we had everybody, you know, actually had great sewer projects, different things that they were working with at the time. You guys did a very good job of um, passing that around, but we really didn't have a whole lot at that time, but. It seems since COVID and everything is going, a lot of people came to us with a lot of things and uh, so now we got a lot of different opportunities. And I know you've got a very short window to make sure it's taken care of. And this is a project that we could probably have all that paperwork taken care of within a couple of weeks. Uh, which would make it a lot easier for the accounting, because it sure wouldn't take us long to have the receipts to take care of that problem, so. It is one of the things that would be quicker than having to, you know.
Do a building.
Yeah, if you gotta build something or get a contract for something, this is basically, we're, you know, already working with 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 the representative. I told him, I says. I don't want to take up any more and any more time until I know I got funding. If I got funding, I'll go visit him later this week, we'll come up with what we need. And we'll get it approved next Tuesday and we can have it all taken care of and I can get the paperwork right straight back, so.
Anything additional, you're gonna just apply towards the purchase of land that we've already, that you already took care of, correct?
Already got the land already taken care of, that part's already been taken care of, so we pretty much got that. A lawnmower died.
Understanding what Chris though is any, if the tractor doesn't come to the amount we're asking for, any additional funds can go back to the township to help.
We also blew our lawnmower up two weeks ago.
Yeah. If I knew one for sale.
We do have a ten thousand dollar lawnmower that, and basically, you know, we were putting five thousand dollars into a probably ten-year-old lawnmower. And I just, it was, so it's a kind of a combination area that I would probably right now, if we had it, uh, the current one was. I think the bid that I kind of had was around forty-five, about forty-five hundred for a utility tractor. Um, we did have a backhoe. Um, we've kind of been talking, we'd probably switch that over to more of a snow blower um, application, because I think we'd get more use out of that. Um, in that, in probably a grading blade, uh, what they call a box blade for the driveways um, on that. And, you know, going with a three-point uh, mower, which is gonna cover the larger areas a lot better, so.
What I've proposed to the board is that. The potential to offer Elba Township a fifty thousand dollar sub grant of ARPA funds. Of which you would be able to purchase uh, a tractor such as the one that you forward the quote to me, which I included in the packet. If there were additional funds left over from that fifty thousand dollar, which if we look at this quote, it looks like it would be five thousand dollars and change. That money could be applied to the. General fund, Elba Township general fund purchase of the cemetery plot. That would then free up that funds in your general fund to use as you, that's how I propose.
Yes, that.
That is acceptable, so a request for you.
Hmm. Yep, that would work just fine on that, so that's. It's just helping.
Easy.
It's just helping to kind of put, like I said, we never had a place to store anything like this in the past and it's, you know, that was what we were originally. I'm gonna do, we started talking about that'd be a good thing to do with our money and it just worked out that we just bought the whole thing already pre-built just down the road. And we now have a very nice. Um, cemetery is, they were even nice enough to seed it and plant the seeding for us, so it's really, it's really nice right now, so it's. Yeah. It turned out to be a very good opportunity for us, so.
That doesn't normally happen with cemetery as all the other expansions, you had to foot the over. To seed it and make it.
We had to seed it, we had to plant, we had to do.
Had to level it all, so this is very nice. You need a motion?
Township.
Yep, I so moved that we approve the request for fifty thousand dollars for ARPA funds for Elba Township.
I'll second it.
Moved by Steve, supported by Jan, to approve the ARPA request for Elba Township. That should be a roll call, right?
Commissioner Sapsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Got a contractor ready for it. Ready to do this quick.
Do you need it? What do you need?
Sign it, sign it, and then you want to stick around?
Yeah.
Well, he doesn't have to sic me on you when you don't, you don't answer the emails that happens with some other people with signing contracts. Makes it real easy.
I will scan that and get that to you.
Okay.
You have plenty of time to make your fire authority meeting.
And that will be fun. Okay, thank you guys very much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
You're be safe.
Yes.
Okay, number four, non-union wages and benefits, uh, Sheila's uh, assistant will handle that.
Okay, so when we look at the um. The agenda online, it says TPOM dash annual salary for this one, okay? Because it says something different on what we have on our paper.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, it's.
No, that's all right. So we're do, we're actually looking at the. Um, Sheila's memo for TPOAM.
Yep, contract.
So the negotiations with TPOAM, they ratified the contract after. Uh, we had discussed what to do in closed session last time.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they ratified the exact same contract that GELC did. Uh, this memo outlines what uh, those terms are for both of the contracts. Do you want me to run through the terms or would you um? Just prefer anybody refers to the.
Somebody wants to, I I don't see that.
We went through them, we went through them in closed session. Came out and ratified with GLC, so. Looking to ratify this TA.
The motion?
I do.
I so moved that we um, approve the twenty twenty-four negotiation terms for the TPOAM. Contract ratification.
I'll second it.
Moved by Steve and supported by Jan to ratify these uh. Salary bonuses. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's nay. Motion carried.
All right, we are looking for a second motion to mirror those terms within those tentative agreements um. As to follow the annual salary policy that we're gonna see for non-union and for. Apartment heads and for elected officials. If you would like to.
I.
That is for. Non sheriff department, non nine one one employees, they would, they will follow the sheriff.
I so moved that we ratify the non-union annual salary. Um, policy to mirror that of the GLC and the TPOAM contracts that were just ratified. For all the department heads and elected officials.
Need a second. Moved by Steve, supported by George to ratify the non-union annual salary, salary policy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's nay. Motion carried. Okay.
All right, next item is uh, so that you will have to do that second motion going forward. What Sheila is proposing is that in the. Non-economic personnel manual. We add under section three, employee benefits. Annual salary increases to GLC, TPOAM will automatically apply towards the non-union. Apartment heads and um.
Elected officials.
Elected. Unless otherwise stated, so if. We look at it differently.
Hmm.
Then we could, we can pull that out and change things for a different group, but it would automatically apply to the non-union employees. If this was added to the non-economic personnel manual, so. What she, what we're looking for is a motion to accept. Provided policy which will automatically adjust non-union salaries based on the terms negotiated for unionized courthouse staff. One thing I do want to point out before you would make that is should GLC and TPOAM. Have different salary schedules in the future? The non-union will follow GLC, the non or. Person. Um, could see something like that happen in the future, especially if the state of Michigan decides they want to come in and start running. Uh, the county courts, which they've been whispering about that for.
Yeah.
I so moved that we change the uh. Burbage in the county policy manual so that our non-union. Um. Staff along with elected officials and department heads would uh, automatically um, receive the same. As the. Contracts that are negotiated for our other staff. If there is a. Differential between TPOM and GLC, they will follow the GLCs due to um. The probability of, there could be some state funding that comes available in the other.
That'll play.
That'll work. That's where I got confused with you. Now he's adding this other thing. Pretty good what I had to say.
Moved by Steve, supported by George, what Steve said.
He wants to change.
And change the policy.
Nope.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's nay, motion carried. Hey, yeah, budget now?
We do. So today. We are gonna run through our special revenue funds. Uh, two weeks ago, we went over the general fund and all the departments within the general fund. Uh, the general fund is. Uh, paid for primarily through the general obligation or the um. General operating millage. The special revenue funds, uh. Each of them requires uh, accounting for expenditures and revenues separately from each other, so you can look at them. Kind of as each one of them provides a very specific service to. Uh, our residents, um, and they are funded by something specific that can only be used to provide those services. Um, so the worksheets that we're looking at right now, this is just the general overview of each of these revenue of these funds. And how they are funded. Uh, I do have also the detail behind each one of those that is completed that we will reference to as I go through a couple of examples. But I just want to start off by giving you some easy examples of how some of these operate. So we're looking at Fund Two Oh Eight there, um, near the top, it's Parks and Rec. So we know that our Parks and Rec here at Gracia County has a very specific funding source. We have a special millage that is voted on every eight years that funds our Parks and Rec. Um. Looking at our column there, twenty-four, twenty-five budget for Parks and Rec. There is seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars available to be spent in that budget. The next column over, local taxes make up seven hundred and sixteen thousand dollars of that. The local taxes is the special uh, s. Millage that is voted on. Department generated is sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. Department generated uh, expenditures can be park entrance fees. Uh, ice cream sales, kayak rentals, camping fees, things like that. Um, so when we get all the way over, we see that we are, our total revenue is seven hundred and eighty-six thousand. To our seven hundred and seventy-six thousand expenditures, so we're making more. Uh. Our revenue is higher than our expenditures, and that's what we want to see in these individual funds as we're going through. Um, if our revenue is not higher, we either have to transfer some money in, typically from the general fund. Um, we'll go through some examples uh, for friend of the court here in a minute. On money that we have to transfer in from the general fund. Or we have to use money that is in the uh, fund balance, which is essentially the savings from previous years. Uh, in their own personal bank account. Each one of these funds is uh, tracked very separately, so. Money that is raised by Parks and Rec can only be used by Parks and Rec. We cannot transfer that money to building inspections. We can't transfer that money to the childcare fund. All of these have to be funded individually. All right, so let's look at one that has uh, that requires a transfer. Fund rating underneath it, two, two funds underneath it, Fund Two One Five, Friend of the Court. So we have uh, eight hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar expenditure budget for that. So we have uh eight hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar expenditure budget for that. Department generates thirty-eight thousand. We have a federal grant, yeah, we have a federal grant that comes through the state for six hundred and seventy thousand. For a total revenues of seven hundred and eight thousand. Seven hundred and eight thousand does not fund the total expenditures of eight ninety-five. So we need to transfer money in from the general fund. Why is that? Well, when you get into the details of the state grant, the, the, the federal grant that comes through the state. They pay two-thirds of our expenses for child. Child support enforcement, is that correct? Did I say that correctly? They pay two-thirds of it. So the county is responsible for paying the other third. That is why we transfer in additional funds to, to help pay for that. So let's look at a fund. Where we don't have any revenues or, or, or we don't have any transfers coming in, but we're using fund balance, and let me explain to you why we would do that. So let's look at Fund two-three-one, our opioid fund. So we have talked about how on January first, we, is our target to begin spending. Some of the lawsuit settlement funds that we have collected in our opioid fund. So what we.
Fifty-nine.
Okay.
Two-three-one.
Okay, thanks.
So. What we have done is we budgeted fifty thousand dollars in expenditures to get some of our opioid uh programs up and going next fiscal year. We are expecting about another two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to come in through annual payments for these lawsuits, that's the department generated. But that two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars does not cover the anticipated five hundred thousand dollars in expenditures. The rest of it's gonna come from our fund balance. From previous um settlement checks that we have got, because at this point we have. I believe we have a little over two million dollars in this fund at this time.
Oh, you saw.
So those are the, the three examples, the, the three different ways that these funds are operated, using fund balance, using transfers. Or being department-generated um yeah. Each of, like I said, each of these provide their own special service either. To the county itself, such as a capital improvement fund, or to the residents. Such as the permits fund or in, indigent defense fund. Now I'm going to. Give you uh commissioners a moment to look this over, if you have some funds that you're interested in learning about. Or how. They operate or why we spend this much money or this little money out of them. I'd like to feel some questions from you. And like I said, we can go to the detailed budget behind that summary. But I think reviewing that summary is the best way for you to come up with uh questions for me.
Some of these are just very fixed things, like your fringe benefit one really doesn't, I mean, there's no, no other s- funding source out there.
Yeah, fringe benefit is, is very, yes.
It's not fixed, it moves every year because of the way it costs just, but there is no other funding source other than. I mean, we have to pay it out of our general fund, that's just part of the.
So, yes, healthcare, we pay Blue Cross Blue Shield out of our fringe benefit.
Yeah.
But we charge the treasurer's office for their employees, we charge central dispatch for their employees. We charge friend of the court for their employees, they all send money to the fringe benefit fund to pay all those.
Good, but it all comes out of the general fund dollars.
Well, no, no, I mean, uh the friend of the court, you know, two thirds of the friend of the court's salaries and benefits are paid by the state.
Yeah, cuz it just, according to what it looks like under six seventy-eight, it's like it all comes out of. Um.
Transfer.
Inter-fund, okay, so it's.
So it's coming from other funds.
Other funds.
Including the general.
Okay. Nothing comes out of fund balance to cover that though, so.
Correct. Yep, we would, our math would be off if, if.
Yeah.
We ever had a fund balance in there that wasn't to pay the next month's bills.
Hmm.
Go page.
You, you are free to ask any questions about the budget right now.
Yeah, okay, I just have to ask you about on page sixty-one, utilities rent. And that would be.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have. Any numbers. What funded the end? Central dispatch, okay.
If it's central dispatch, what would that be called um?
Well, because everyone who has a building has utilities, so.
But they get a mortgage, they don't have a rent, they don't rent that.
What line item are we looking at?
Right there.
Utilities though, I mean, they have to pay for the power, they have to pay for the water. Um. It is possible snow plowing would be in there too, I mean, things like that, just because. Rent doesn't apply to.
Uh huh.
Central dispatch doesn't mean that that line item isn't used in other departments too that does have rent, for instance. M S U Extension, they rent their building from the city of Alma. So M S U Extension would have that exact same line item, but they would put their five hundred dollar monthly rent in there. Well, you'll see that there are a couple um. Items. Brownfield, um I need to work with Greater Grashit to get some exact numbers for Brownfield. Uh I was waiting until um. Until Jennifer uh. Presented the childcare fund information before I put that in there, these will be filled in tomorrow. My next step is to circle back around. And start at the beginning of the budget and start working in. Some of the changes that I have already seen in the last month and a half and working in some of the department head suggestions. Yeah, if the department heads are looking at this and seeing, hey, that's not what I was hoping for in my budget. Starting tomorrow, I start all over and start working all of those back into it. Um. The one piece that is missing that will be presented in two weeks when we have our public hearing that I'll go over in detail. Is we are required to have a, I, I have to report to you. What the fund balance in each of these funds are. Because if I'm pulling two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from the fund balance and the opioid funds to cover next year's expenditures.
Hmm.
You guys need to know that there's two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars available.
Hmm.
So that will be a part of this packet. That's required by the state that I, that I, that that is part of the budget packet, so. I'm about two-thirds of the way done with that and. That will be sent to the commissioners next week along with the entire budget book. So like I said, I will start over. Go through it again. Put the budget book together, next Monday it needs to be posted publicly um because the public. We are required to give them seven days to go over our budget book. Before the public hearing, and when we have the public hearing. Uh what that is, how that's different from a regular board meeting. Is that there are different rules, more freedoms for the public to have interactions to. Ask us specific questions and for us to respond to them on their specific questions for. The, uh, and to express their concerns, so. We'll be doing that at the beginning of the next meeting and.
Would there typically be many people come and ask questions?
Um. How many, George, in the last eight years, I don't think I've been asked.
I've never, we've never had anybody come in.
What's the Fund six ninety-two tile fund?
Okay, so. Down at the drain office, they have. Stock, uh like a stockyard of. Product so that they don't have to order it when something breaks or something like that, so. They purchase this tile. It's sitting out there by the road commission.
Yeah, yeah.
So if something happens, they can just grab whatever.
They have a blowout on a county main that's buried, they got the.
They got the.
They can just go fix it.
Yeah.
So a lot of water in this county, there's a lot of drain.
Hmm hmm hmm, well, there's a, the drain law is.
Oh, I know.
Very, very thick.
I know.
Anytime you do anything, you have to open up a new fund.
Yeah, I just, just like, holy, delete it, there's a bunch of them.
By the way, that. The drain building looks really nice.
Totally nice.
It's really.
I changed that, the look of that building.
Man, it's like, wow.
I thought it was modern, brand new. How many they put that there?
I had the same thought when I went by the first time when they were, it was just kind of rough painting it, they hadn't done all that, I was like. What? And I was like, ah, that's right, we approved that.
It looks really nice, it's modern, they got a nice modern paint job on it.
Yeah, it looks totally different than the way it did before, it's the two stone, it's.
It's really nice.
Really nice.
I'm glad we.
Yeah.
Do that.
Glad we did it too.
What you got for me, Dave?
Got this million dollars for the Grashit Airport Authority Fund.
That. Is in the. Inter-fund transfers, um if you remember when we went over the general fund, there was a proposal to transfer. One million dollars to the airport authority uh in order to. Give it that seed money that it needs to operate. Hopefully going forward without additional funding needed from other municipalities.
Sounds good. Well, this isn't on here, but did the. Animal control, they get their new truck?
That was. Last year, yeah, I think it was last year. Um it was budgeted last fiscal year, they had some issues. Getting it ordered and I think.
When everybody had trouble getting trucks.
Yeah, they could arrive.
Anything, really.
Yes, they did. I think they have another one on the five-year plan, four or five years from.
Out there away, as I saw.
Guess I didn't mention that. The Ham- Ham- Hamilton Township, one of their trustees passed away unexpectedly.
Yeah.
Jamie Oswald. He was working on a piece of, doing some artwork with some wood and it was electricity involved.
Fracture wood burning.
And electrocuted himself. Forty-five, forty-four, forty-five, very old. Uh. Uh it's like, whoa.
Hmm hmm. That stuff is really cool, but it's really dangerous.
Chinese artworks.
Yeah, they are, yeah, they, you.
It's the art of putting electricity through wood and it follows, and you have a green, grainy wood. It follows the grain and looks like, like streaks.
Nail is involved.
Yeah, that's how you get the, you can only do a certain space, depending on the species of the wood and. They, they paint a flurry of water and uh. Making soda to help.
Got one senior and a couple others.
Yeah, younger.
Little kids, little girls.
It's one of his daughters.
For me?
It was one of his daughters that found him.
Oh geez.
I couldn't get him answer the phone.
Oh boy.
Daughter out there.
Oh.
The poor one.
Was sad. What's really sad about it is Tom Clark's dad died that way.
Really? Lucky, lucky.
He was underneath the house across space, but had a, had a trouble light. And it had a leak. Oh, no, truck light had a bad spot. That's when Tom was just, he was just a young kid. Yeah, he wasn't very old. Yeah, I remember, I remember that, it's like yesterday.
Yeah.
Anything else jumps out at anybody?
Well, I am available. In my office, anybody has any questions? At any time, you shoot me an email, shoot me a fax, give me a call. If you have questions, email the questions. You just figure that out, I can forward that right down to someone who knows exactly what's going on if I don't have time.
Yep.
You have any other unfinished business?
Make a motion that we suspend the regular meeting and go into the. Airport.
Authority meeting, second.
Motion by George, supported by Steve to. Go into the airport meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oohs nay? Motion carried.
I'm second to that.
I'm second to that, pardon me.
Okay.
Hey. Do you have any comments, Chris, or something?
Manager's report?
Yeah, Dennis, do you want to give your report?
You're gonna get copies for them?
Definitely did.
Oh, perfect, thanks. Yeah, I just got that done today around noon, so um. Yeah, I mean, there's always a lot of activity at the airport, obviously, uh. You know, we've uh got jet fuel and hundred low light fuel this. Um. But probably some key things were. Mount Pleasant Airport was shut down for three weeks for some runway taxiway improvements. So we had some airplanes moved down to Alma. Um temporarily, uh if they wanted to fly them, they wouldn't be able to fly out of Mount Pleasant. Um so. We had a, a Lear jets, mother jets, we had a three-ten come down. Um we had people coming down to get fuel from Mount Pleasant because they couldn't get fuel there. Um so um. So that, I mean, that's kind of a one-time thing uh. So uh I mean, that's kind of a big thing that happened from May, uh August eleventh through the twenty-eighth. Um and then, of course, we had a fly-in, uh we estimated. We guaranteed two hundred lunches, uh we estimated we probably fed over two fifty, brought more food in. Um we had between fifty and sixty airplanes that flew in for the event. Uh. Probably the thing that happened after the thing, we had a jet come in at six-thirty at night. And yeah. With the jet delivered a group of entertainers for the concert at the casino. Uh so, and they ended up buying three hundred and seventy-five gallons of Jet A, so. The entertainer was Keith Urban, so. Um but they didn't leave till like eleven-thirty at night, and they're going back to Nashville and. Uh dropped them off and the plane was going on to Wichita uh for maintenance. And then later in the week it was going to Europe with a different entertainer, so. So it was some excitement at the airport uh when they got in. Um I did include, I mean, you can read through there what kind of the activity we had. I did put uh on the next page there. I did put in. I did put on the next page there, I did put in just a comparison of the amount of uh, Jet A that compared to last year. Um, twenty twenty-three sales, uh, gallons against sixteen thousand eight seventy or eight thirty-one. Uh, compared to this year, we already got twenty-one thousand eight hundred gallons of uh, Jet A and hundred low lead. Um, last year we had eleven thousand seven nineteen. Uh, so far this year we got through August, end of August, fifteen thousand. And if you look at the numbers, uh, the numbers are up, obviously just from, um, the number of act, activity at the airport. I did go back and pull some other numbers. Um, if, if you remember at the airport, we had a fuel truck for the hundred low lead. So, uh, we had hours that really were from like eight-thirty to three-thirty unless somebody called and was coming in later. But I went back and looked how many transactions we've had after three-thirty uh, so far this year. And about twenty-four percent of our transactions are after three-thirty. Um, so that reinforces, you know, the fuel farm being self, self-serve. Um, if you take out, um, uh, three-point airplanes and the flight school stuff, about twelve point seven percent. Um, would be after hours because our flight school people have authority to use a fuel truck before. So you have to compare apples to apples. And it doesn't really matter between uh, Jet A and uh, hundred low lead. So and normally with the Jet A, if the uh, jets are coming in, we would be available to be there after hours to help it fill up anyway. So uh, most of them want additional services, even though it's self-serve. They just don't want to get Jet A on if they're going to take clients. Uh, pick up people or drop people off just to get Jet A in their hands, it smells and stuff around their clothes. So, um, other than that, um, I did put a picture in there of our new beacon. Uh, that was installed on the twenty-second. Um, the twenty-third, had to have a crane come in and take the old beacon off. Uh, the old beacon's about five foot tall. Uh, the new beacon is a lot shorter. Uh, the old ones.
Isn't this actually the old beacon?
That's the old beacon, yeah.
And if you look at the pole, look at the pole right there.
Yeah.
In the foreground.
Yeah.
You, we straightened that pole, right?
Yep.
That's how straight the pole is. Look, look right to the left.
Mm hmm.
Follow it. You can't see the beacon, but it, it's as straight as that pole.
Yep. So, um, yeah, the new one, uh, the old, the old beacon weighed about five hundred pounds. The new one is like sixty pounds and it's LEDs. Um, it took the, uh, they had to bring a crane in to lift the old one off, put the new one on. Uh, the crane was there about a half hour.
Mm hmm.
Took longer to set up than it did to take the old one off because they were there earlier. Uh, they, they got the new one operational. Uh, they got there about, uh, oh, nine o'clock, about two o'clock in the afternoon. The old one was off, the new one was on and operational and listed. And then they come back the next day and they painted, painted the whole thing, put on the other devices and stuff. And then they were back a third time to put in the grounding ring around it. Uh, uh, so uh, so that all got done, which is great news. Um, we'll have to decide what we want to do with the old beacon. I'm still doing a little research with that through the company, find out when it was actually put there. So, um, fourth thing I just put in there was just, uh, if you were at the, at the fly-in there, we had, um, uh, Three Point Aviation had commissioned the E A chapter to make some of these pull behind, uh, airplanes. We're going to make six of them and they did get two of them done. Uh, prior to that, uh, they're supposed to get two more done, but next year was six of them that we could pull people around. We did give rides in those. We gave fifty-one kids rides. So, so.
Yeah, they were all happy. Kids are smiling.
Mm hmm. Yeah. So, uh, going forward, we'll have more, um, work for around. Hopefully a lot more people can show up. So appreciate everybody coming. Um, the, uh, the weather was perfect.
Perfect.
Everything kind of worked out this year. I appreciate all the support and, and Facebook stuff that everybody posted. People come and said, oh, I saw it on the county website or I saw it here. I saw.
The atmosphere was a lot different this year than last year.
Yeah, yeah. Well, last year we had weather issues too, so.
I mean, the people and their attitude.
Yes.
Uh, a lot of people came up to me and said, you guys are doing a good job. Keep it up.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It may, EA has always had their worries that county take over and whatever. We changed their minds. They're all on board now. So it's all good. Yeah. Question.
Yeah.
The above ground fuel tanks, have we got anything going on there?
Uh, if you look on, I've had, uh, last month I had a company out on August one. Um, uh, there was a company that came, um, and looked at the tanks, the underground storage tanks and to remove them. They did provide a bid.
Okay.
Um, August fourth, I sent in the intent to the state of Michigan Underground Storage or Fire Department to get, um, there's a thirty-day notice to get the things. Um, we're going to be working on getting a request for proposals. Uh, Chris gave me some, uh, companies that worked on some stuff through the land bank, he said, so. I, I did get one proposal already. There's been another company that came out in July, but they haven't submitted anything yet. So maybe they're waiting for some.
And you think we can get that done before the weather sets in or?
Oh, yeah, I think so. Uh, we, there's thirty days. Uh, the, the document I had sent in, there's a thirty-day wait period after you send it in.
And then they give us the go-ahead to do it?
Yeah, yeah. They basically give us the go-ahead to get the business stuff. So.
Be nice if we could get them up.
Yeah, yeah, we want to get it.
And all that taking.
We've been, uh, removing some of the equipment, uh, when we have chance at the airport. Uh, we had some of the meters removed and some of the other stuffs. So we're starting to, you know, do some stuff that maybe save us some money. But, right, so.
How many planes can fuel a dad at one time?
Just one at a time because it's credit card system. Um, the credit card has to run and has to run the pumps. And then it turns off and then it's slugged. No one wants to. So just one at a time. Usually that's not a problem.
Be nice if we did have a line, Steve, but.
Well, I didn't know if, like, when you get a bunch like those air tractors coming in, working together, I know when they usually if one needs fuel, they all need fuel kind of thing. So.
Yeah, usually, uh, the air tractors that come in, uh, they have their own fuel truck. So they fill the fuel truck up.
Okay.
And they have single point at which they suck into the airplane.
So then they can deal with it. They don't have.
Well, they're loading the, the product, they're loading the fuel.
Okay, so they don't, they don't need to pull up. That's what my big concern was because you know, time is money to those guys. So they've, they've got, they're just filling their truck and okay.
Right, yeah. So, um, that's normally how they do it. They need to fill the truck and the truck. The one that they normally bring is fifteen hundred gallons. And so they have single point on that. So they just plug it in while they're pumping in. Uh, pu, pu, and whatever product they're using, airplane gets full because they don't turn the airplanes off.
Yeah.
It's the feather, the, the props and and keep everything running because they don't want to stop them. So. I don't know if there's any other questions. I tried to lay out kind of what, uh, we can see at the airport and so.
Now, the, the jet that come in with the entertainers, they would have normally landed in Mount Pleasant.
Normally would be Mount Pleasant. The only reason they came to our spot was because the airport was closed. So, yeah. Yeah. So Keith Urban, this is, uh, I think his third concert he's had. We had the casino and there was another couple that flew in from Chicago. Um, that morning or the day before. And, uh, another couple met him and they were real fans of Keith Urban. They'd been, the one lady says they'd been to thirteen of his concerts. And this would have been their thirteenth one. And, uh, she said the two best ones, or maybe those, two best ones they've ever been at are two previous ones at, at the casino. So if I talk to her again, it might be the three best. Anyway.
With, with our old, like you're researching, I know one of the things you'd mentioned is to the possibility of seeing if like Calm Zoo Air Museum would be interested. Have you heard back from them or?
Uh, well.
Haven't you even offered it? Yeah.
It's funny, uh, one of the representatives is on the board was a flying, he flew in on the T-six. So he said, well, give us the information, you know, he said, I don't know if they'd be interested or not. So.
I just think it'd be, it would be really cool if something from our airport went to that air museum because that, that's, if you have never been there, that's really something.
Yeah. So, I mean, there's, there's a couple of different options. One is to donate to a museum. It was, you know, uh, put it on eBay and see if we can get a big dollar out of it or some dollars out of it. Uh, third would be to display it at the airport.
Yeah, that was.
So, um, anytime you display something like that, there's always problems of it getting
damaged.
It's damage and maintenance. So.
See that being right in, uh, guy that lives out on forty-six is front yard, you know?
Put it out his barn.
Yeah, yeah, newly painted barn. Like the Red Baron.
Oh, thank you, Dennis.
Just, uh, I would talk about a few things that I might need to tap into your expertise real quick here.
Okay.
In two weeks, um, we are holding our MAP meeting with, uh, the Department of Aeronautics. The MAP meeting is when we go over our five or eight-year plan of improvements that we would like the state and the feds to help us with, um, financially. It will be at the airport. Sure, the last time that they have been out at the airport, but they offered to come up. Um, so we jumped on it. Uh, the week after that, we will be meeting with the advisory group, regular scheduled airport advisory committee meeting. So we will have myself, Dennis and John Van Drunen from the engineering company will also be at the MAP meeting, but then we'll, we will all take that information to the airport advisory meeting. Which then we'll take it back here at our next authority meeting. So there is a, a bunch of information that is on its way. Just letting you know that. Did I miss anything in explaining that kind of?
No, uh, some of that information had to get in by the end of the, end of the month.
Yep.
John, John submitted that stuff. Um, so I think from the advisory committee's perspective, once we have that information and kind of review it, there may be some switching of some things that we might want to prioritize and stuff. So.
What I'm hoping is we'll see those, we'll see what projects are next and the advisory committee will lay out who is responsible for accomplishing what by what date to actually put the eight-year timeline into what's going to happen the next three months, what's going to happen the next six months. When are we going to start getting bids for this project? When are we going to say within this request for proposals, project needs to start? Who is responsible for making sure it starts then, you know? What does Chris have to do? What does Dennis have to do? What does John have to do? And when they have to do it? So we actually start getting a lot more of these projects done and start pulling more of our federal money down.
Yeah, and discussions that Chris and I had, some of the things I'm concerned about is we, we get into projects, but we don't get, we end up bidding them in June or July. It should be bid in January, February, March. So, um, we don't have the specs done. We don't have this stuff done to get it bid early enough. And then by the time we get later in the billing cycle, everybody's already put stuff up. So
we can change.
I don't want to get that moved back so that we can get more competitive bids, I think. So.
Yeah, instead of getting the bids from people that are too full that don't want to do the job. So they just bid it really, really high.
So.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted.
Yeah, if there's any other questions, I'll be around.
Thanks, Dennis.
For the financials with the board, if that's okay, real quick. Um, I just ran, um, what our financials looked like as of the end of August. At the very top, I put in our cash balance, which was two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Um, when we took over the airport operations, uh, last calendar year, uh, we inherited, uh, three hundred and one thousand dollars. Uh, so with what we have spent, uh, so far throughout the year, two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. To have two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars left over at this point, that actually exceeded what my not looking at a forecast was. When I ran this report, I was expecting it to be somewhere closer to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cash. Um, and this is one hundred percent attributed to fuel sales. You know, you'll see that we've purchased seventy-six thousand dollars in, in fuel sales and, you know, sold a hundred and ten thousand dollars so far. So the model is working. We are attracting people that have never stopped at Gracchett Community Airport before to just stop in to buy fuel. Dennis tells me that people call him wondering, is this fuel price accurate? Do you have fuel that we can stop by and get? Which is, uh, uh, wonderful. Um, the more people that do that, the more times that they'll tell people in their chapters, other hobbyists, et cetera. So now we're just a, a few very large crop duster companies away from really blowing the top of our fuel sales.
Air tractors.
Mm hmm.
Does anybody have any questions about the financials? I know they're fairly basic. I think I covered it.
I'm really glad the airport's doing so well.
Last item on the list.
Courtesy care policy.
This is, um, three pages longer than what we were hoping.
Nobody ever reads them. They just sign it.
We were, we were hoping to get, um, feedback. This did go to legal counsel.
Yeah.
So it did go down to Stoll. And they did write this up for us. I'm not going to say that we should take any of it out because we paid the experts to do this for us. Um, but it would require this authority to adopt the courtesy card.
It is long, isn't it? I was reading that. I thought.
It's a lot. It's a lot. Eighteen ninety-one.
I'd make a motion that we adopt the airport courtesy card policy as written.
By George, supported by Steve to adopt the courtesy care policy for the community airport. Some favors say aye. Motion made, motion carried.
That's all we have for you tonight. Unless you have questions.
Make a motion that we return to our regular scheduled meeting.
By George, supported by Tim to exit the airport meeting and go into a regular meeting. Is there any, uh, additional public comment?
People?
I have none.
You're just here for, uh.
Somebody work. It's time for your motion.
Oh, a motion to adjourn?
Seconding.
Support, anybody support?
By Tim, supported by.
Well, got the lab and Tim grabbed sport.
Say aye.
Aye. All right.